I'd like to call the meeting of the City Reno Planning Commission to order. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to be relaxed of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just.
Can we have a roll call, please, Michelle?
Dennis Romeo.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Buzz Harris.
Here.
Kimberly Locke.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for the public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak form and give it to Michelle. We will call you up at the proper time. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Item four is approval of the minutes. We'll take this as two motions. We need an approval for the September 24, 2012 special meeting.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Commissioner Kaufman, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before I second that, I want to, for the record, I turned over a couple of small grammatical errors to Michelle for this, but nothing that was major to change the documentation that was provided.
So noted.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Abstain.
So we have four ayes and three abstains. Motion carries.
I'm sorry, Kimberly Locke needs to abstain.
She did.
Oh, she did, okay.
That's the three.
Kimberly Locke abstains. Okay, and then also Kaufman and Woosley need to abstain.
Correct. We need a motion on the October 3, 2012 regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Weiskie.
Commissioner Kaufman, seconds.
Seconded by Commissioner Kaufman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four is Reno City Council liaison reports. Do we have any? Pardon? Item five, public comments, or public hearings, excuse me. At this time, I'm going to announce and ask for a request from the board. Item two, LDC 13-00026. The applicant has asked for a continuance to December the 5th. Will need a motion to continue this item?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have, whoops.
For enclosed senior planner, if you could open the public hearing, if, to continue, you need to open it and see if anybody wants to speak.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Before, sorry, Kevin. If anyone is here to speak on that item, I'll open public comment. Public comment is now open on that item. Michelle, anybody on that?
No, I don't have any comments.
Last chance.
Thank you.
I am going to close public comment. Now we'll take a motion to continue this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Weiskie, I make motion to continue this agenda item until our December 2012 meeting.
We have a motion for continuance. Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Second from Commissioner Locke.
Can we insert the date? My calendar shows that to be December the 6th. Michelle, am I right on that?
I believe so. Let me just check. It is on a Thursday.
Because I think the council's got a Thursday, yeah.
It'd be Thursday.
It's on a Thursday.
Thursday, December the 6th.
Okay, then it'll have to be amended for December.
So amended.
Can you amend your second?
I second him, second that.
Okay, are we clear on it? December 6th?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries seven to zero. Public hearing number one, LDC 13-00029, Bella Vista Ranch Villages A and B. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative step forward? You have 15 minutes to present your case. Please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you. My name's Mike Meyer. I work with DR Horton. I'm here to represent the request to go ahead and amend the condition of approval number one for Bella Vista Village B. We're looking to take 27 lots that are set up currently as a duet lot. The original application by Centex Homes ended up creating lots out there that have five-foot setbacks on either side, and they also had a configuration that had what they called the duet lot, which was a zero lot, five-foot on one side, zero-foot lot line on one side, with an attached product. So in essence, it was zero feet on the other side of the property line and five feet on its other side. What we're proposing to do is have an amendment to that that allows us to build a five-foot setback on one side of the house, a zero-foot setback on the other side. We then create on the adjacent lot a five-foot easement for drainage, PUE, maintenance of the house, and access to the side of the house, and then a five-foot setback in the house. So we end up with a street scene that shows five feet on either side of the house as you go down the street scene. There's no increase in density. We're just taking the duet lots and making them into, in essence, a single-family lot. There'll be recorded easements on the lots. We'll have to record an easement on the adjacent lot to allow access. We've moved fences back behind the house so that the person doesn't have to go through a fence to get to the side of his particular unit on the adjacent lot. And it allowed us to make a more uniform street scene than having two houses and then a four-car garage, and then two houses and a four-car garage. Our units are going to be a little bit smaller. We're in the 1,500, 1,700 square foot range to about 1,900 square foot for these houses. And we are in a, we'll be in a portion of the neighborhood where when we change these lots, or if we can change these lots, they're on both sides of the street. The street above us is a duet street that was built by Centex where the duet show, so it's not like we're mixing and matching in between the units. We'll have kind of a clustered area. It'll be single-family lots. These are the last 27 lots in this particular subdivision that are finished. There's another 127 lots behind us that are unfinished, and those are also single-family detached lots with five-foot and five-foot setbacks on either side. So I'm here if you have any questions.
At the proper time, there may be.
Okay.
Thank you. For the city, Vern.
For enclosed senior planner, this is really kind of a minor change. It's allowed in the PUD to have this type of setback pattern. As Mr. Meyer indicated, the lots are in a consolidated location. Is that showing up there? So that they're, you know, on, both are all on the same, on both sides of the streets and within a kind of a consolidated block area. So it probably will add to the architectural diversity of the project without significantly really changing what's going on there. Staff is recommending approval. I got one phone call just asking what was going on, and he was satisfied with the answer. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Before we move farther along, do we have any disclosures on this item? Any commissioners? None? Okay. I'll close. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. Seeing none. Close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the commissioners for questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Weiskie.
I have a question for the applicant, please. The applicant's representative. The easement is going, is a maintenance easement, if you will. But who is responsible for maintaining the property within that easement?
The underlying fee title holder.
Okay. So the homeowner that has the easement on his property is responsible for maintaining it and landscaping it in such a way that his neighbor can get to the neighbor's property and do his home maintenance?
Correct.
And that's spelled out in your CCNRs, I mean?
The CCNRs can be amended. What we have is also project-specific disclosures that we sit down with the plot plan and explain to the homeowner what easements are on his property. We have him initial it as he purchases the property.
Okay. So that he can't landscape it and prevent his neighbor from getting to do, to his neighbor's house and do his maintenance?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Any comments? Entertaining motion. Commissioner Woosley.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a motion. Case number LDC 13-00029. Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the amendment to condition number one for LDC 05-00496, Bella Vista Ranch Villages A and B, and the addition of condition number 21 as written in the staff memo in the planning commission for LDC 13-00029 dated November 8, 2012. I can make all the findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Kaufman.
I'll second that motion. I can make all the findings.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion is carried seven to zero. Item two has been continued. Item three, LDC 13-00025, PUD McCarran Crossing. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative step forward? Identify yourself. You have 15 minutes.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Railey with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of the applicant. I think many of you are familiar with this site. We came through earlier this year for a master plan amendment to special planning area, and at that time, we discussed that we would be following it up with a PUD. And I know Commissioner Weiskie had some very stern advice on how to develop that PUD, and we've spent quite a bit of time, really the reason it's taken so long to get to where we are now, is we've been to the NAB three times. We've been, we've met individually with property owners in the area, with representatives of the homeowners to the south, with the university, with city council members, and we kind of took all that input, along with the input we got at the planning commission, to put together the PUD that's before you tonight. And really, as we talked about in the last hearing, the PUD approach allows for tighter regulations over what was proposed previously on this site. This plan here, our phase one plan, as you can see, these buildings are essentially enclosed RV garages, would be for boat and RV storage. They're metal buildings. The remaining sites that you see are like a carport-type structure that you could park a boat and RV under. The plan that came through before, which was actually approved by the planning commission and subsequently denied by city council, called for the majority of the site to be filled and for mini storage units to be put in there. What we've done is we've taken out the mini storage. It will simply be the boat and the RV storage. We have requirements in our handbook that all the vehicles must be operable vehicles so that we, you know, you don't get kind of old junk cars in there. The other thing, that the management will collect keys. Obviously, you know, floods are something that we can predict. Flooding is really the key issue here. If a flood is forecast, owners will be called and requested to remove their boat or RV. If they don't, the management will have the ability to do it for them. And the project developer owns several storage sites in town, so he has the means to store whatever's in here on a temporary basis at other locations. Really, the major issue on this site is the flood, the flood zone. If you look at the map, our site is highlighted in red. The area to, that's in blue, is actually a shaded zone X. This is not in the critical flood zone, where the green is. And so if you look at our plan, essentially, we're putting our buildings in the area that's outside of the critical flood zone so that we're not have, we're not going in and filling in the floodplain. We have the buildings out of that critical zone. Obviously, if the carport structures, the metal buildings, they can withstand a flood. A comment was raised at the NAB that the RV garages would build up water inside of them, create a hazard. Well, we can simply just open the doors and let a lot of the water go through. We also, in looking at this, it looks like there's quite a bit of paving, but that's not actually the case. We have a standard in our handbook that requires the use of alternative paving, such as grindings or permacrete, something that will allow for greater infiltration of the water in a flood event. All of our flood calculations that we included in our hydrology state did not account for that. So if anything, we're showing a one-to-one flood mitigation ratio. If anything, that's going to go up based on that, but until we work with city engineering to determine what the final surface will be, we don't have those precise calculations. But if anything, it's going to work in favor of an increased mitigation. As you can see on the outs, around the entire outside perimeter is a detention basin that varies at about approximately three and a half feet deep. Along the southern boundary, we have a landscape buffer that is essentially triple that of what city code would require, and close to four times the amount of landscaping, including oversized evergreen trees and whatnot. That's all written into the standards. The closest home to the south, the Wadkeys, that's, that's, excuse me, their home is right in this area, and from their home to our closest building is 290 feet, to give you a sense of scale of just how separated that is. We do have provisions for a second phase. This is, would be something that would, could potentially come in the future. Whether it happens or not, there's no intention to build it at this point, but we wanted to allow for the flexibility in the PUD. And what that would do would be allow for some very limited commercial and office use along McCarran. And as you can see, just like the other plan, all the buildings are up out of that critical zone along McCarran Boulevard. And just, I have a very kind of generic and simple exhibit, but I think it paints a good picture. Right now, actually, Michelle, thank you. There's a two-foot deep, and this is to scale, a two-foot deep ditch that runs along the southern boundary of the project. What you see there is the new detention basin, and that section is cut at approximately that location. So it's not even the widest point of the detention basin. And kind of the question that I would post to you is, if you were worried about flooding, which would you rather have? A two-foot ditch or that ditch and then the detention basin? I think it's also important to note that in our standards, we have a standard that says that, you know, city code says that you cannot increase runoff from your property onto adjoining properties. We actually have a standard that says that any development in any phase must show a positive impact to adjoining properties. And that's a standard in our handbook. Just to run through the findings very quickly, there's, you know, as always, there's some findings that don't necessarily apply, but zone change finding C, which says the change in zoning provides for an appropriate use of the property. As I mentioned, this is really a plan that we have personally spent over a year in developing, and I think you could argue that it's essentially developed over the course of three or four years with the other plans that came through and weren't built. So I personally think that, you know, this is one of the, one project that I've spent more time working with community groups and interested parties than probably any project that I've worked on in the last 15 years. Finding E, that the proposed zoning is sensitive to and compatible with use and development of adjacent properties. When we started this process, a comment was made that we were comparing the east side of McCarran to the west side of McCarran. And in fact, I believe there's a letter in your packet tonight from Ms. Roodemeyer that says that we're still doing that, and that's simply not the case. We recognize that the east side of McCarran has a more rural feel, more, less developed feel than the other side. What Ms. Roodemeyer is referring to is a requirement that we are required to simply state what our adjoining uses are. There are intense commercial uses directly to the west of us. That's a statement of fact. I'm not trying to draw any comparison between them, but that is what exists. And for that reason, we've taken a very low-impact use for this site. Even in phase two, if commercial was built, the uses are very limited in the handbook. They're limited in size and type and intensity. As you can see on that, there, with the substantial buffer of, you know, up to upwards of almost nearly 300 feet, we've definitely buffered all the adjoining uses, so we do feel that it's an appropriate use of the property. NRS finding for PEDs, finding F is to protect the life, to protect life and property in areas subject to floods, landsides, and other natural disasters. I think clearly we're meeting that finding by having a standard that says we must show a positive impact. We are not generating any additional flood waters of this. I would, you know, I can't get here and say that we can take 14 acres and solve flood issues in the area. We simply can't. But if anything, we're making it a little bit better, and a project will help spur that along. You know, it's been commented that we should wait till the flood project goes. Well, the flood project is stalled out, and the property owner has a right to move forward with a proposal, and we feel that we've done that in a way that really enhances the area. So I think that finding can be met as well. With that, I'll wrap up and leave it open for questions and answers. Bill Gall with City Reno Engineering is here and can answer any specific engineering questions as well, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Nathan, are you representing the city? For the city of Reno, Nathan Gilbert.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff concurs with the applicant's presentation and can make the applicable findings. Two things, I, well, first of all, let me see, I did, we did receive a letter from Kim Roodemeyer in opposition, which was forwarded to the commission, and one phone call, and also in opposition. Two things I'd like to add is that while this isn't a floodplain, the city has no policies prohibiting development in a floodplain so long as it's appropriately mitigated. And I think that's the key issue with the project in this area, is that it can have no negative impact, one-to-one mitigation. The master plan does not preclude development in a floodplain so long as it's developed to code standards. And secondly, the Trucking Meadows Flood Project still is in effect. Jay Aldean is still director. They're still a viable organization, and they did review this project and indicated that it's in compliance with their models and in compliance with flood project policies so long as the mitigation required in code is in play. That's all I have. Be available for any questions.
Thank you, Neil. Nathan, before we go any farther, I'd like to go into disclosures. I'm sure we all have them. Commissioner Weiskie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I received a, an email today.
Commissioner Stapleton.
I received an email as well as a phone call.
Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I received an email and I met with the applicant's representative.
And I'll back Commissioner Stapleton briefly.
I also met with the applicant's representative.
As did I, sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Woosley.
I as well met with the applicant representative and received an email today.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I had a conversation over the phone with the applicant's representative, and I didn't look at my email today.
Commissioner Locke.
I also spoke with the applicant's representative on the phone and received an email.
And I have also met with the applicant's representative and did receive an email. That being said, this is a public hearing. If you request to speak on this, please do so by filling out a request to speak form. I have three currently. First up is Jim Woodkey. You have three minutes, please.
My name is Jim Woodkey.
Woodkey.
And I own the property right here, and I would like to make clear right up front that we, he said he has met with the neighborhood around there. We have never met with those people, never. God be my witness. And he just said he's met with those people. They have not met with those people, and I live right there. They draw the map, and they come up here where they're saying the water flow is through here. Well, I'll tell you, when the water was running in my front yard, I mean, through my front door, not my back door, I'll guarantee you, it didn't stop right there and turn and go someplace else. I'll guarantee it went cut right down the McCarran in there. So that water was three feet in my yard, and I'll guarantee it was three feet right on the other side of that fence, too. That fence did not stop that water from going that way. We do not want it in there. I hope somebody will take respect of this floodplain. There's three houses right here, and that's it. There's a possibility that, like, they bought all that property down there on, by the river, Ferraris and those rents down there, and they're talking about maybe building a golf course down there or something like that. That's fine. There are three properties there. They could come in and buy us out like they did the Ferraris and the Menogue High School and stuff down there on the river, and then that would be all clear. But I'm sorry, I get upset about this because nobody ever comes out and talks to us. I mean, you people, nobody ever calls us. Nobody's ever come out. When we were flooded, we were standing there hoping we'd get some help, and nobody would bother stopping helping us and what have you. Bill Manke, he bought this property, Bills from around here, Bills, I've known Bill for 60, 70 years. He bought the property, maybe he got a good deal on it. I have no idea. He knows that that was in a floodplain when he bought it, but he bought it, maybe he got a real good deal on it and said, well, I'll do something with it. Maybe, it's like us, we bought a car or something one time in our life, we found out it was a mistake. We didn't buy it. Maybe this is a mistake. Maybe this is an investment that is just going down a drain, because if they're going to spot this, they did it across the street to the cottages. The cottages paid off the city of Reno for, what was it, $50,000? And then the university, being that close like they are, what was in the flood, they lost 400 head of sheep down there, and they're, they do this for a living? And then Bill wants to build these immigrant stories in here. Well, when he builds that in, he puts that in there, when that water comes up there and hits this floodgate here, the water comes from the south and from the north. And when it gets into that corner, it's just going to sit there and swirl, because it's not going to be able to cross McCarran, because McCarran's too high. It's not going to be able to go that way, so it's going to hit this wall here, and it's going to just start squirting around here till it can get down here and get out. So where's my house? It's going to be gone up the drain. I don't, nobody's ever offered a corner to me and say, here, Jim, I'll play a game with you. I'll raise your house up in the air for you. No. That is ridiculous to put that darn thing in there because it's going to make us all hurt. And like I say, I'll repeat again, that nobody has ever got a hold of us and tried to explain this stuff to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen, you wish to speak? Please identify yourself in the microphone so.
My name is Karen Woodkey. I live at 4775 Pembroke, next to the adjacent property, and I don't.
Please talk into the microphone.
Pardon?
Thanks.
I don't, I don't understand why they have to do some kind of, well, enhance, enhance the area. Why does the area have to be enhanced? That McCarran Boulevard was a road to keep traffic going, not to have people stop, stop and have their hair done or do their laundry or whatever. They're trying to get from this end of town to the other end of town. And I don't think it's really needed in that area to have, they want to have a phase two of all their developments and stuff and put in all this fancy stuff. Well, who cares about it? The animals out there don't care, and I don't think the neighbors are going to patronize it. I'm sorry, it is not needed by the neighbors, and they keep saying, well, it's for the benefit of the neighbors, benefit of the neighbors, but I don't think it's going to benefit the neighbors. Pardon me. And like my husband said, nobody has ever contacted us. America shall recommend that they get to the, go have a meeting with the Wadkeys. They've never called us. We heard about a neighborhood meeting a couple, three weeks ago. We were going to go, which we always try to go to if we know about them and it involves us, and it was her, I heard it was changed from where it was over at Ribeiro's Park to Ninth Street. Well, we didn't know that. We go over to Ribeiro's Park, and a couple other people are there. They weren't informed the meeting was changed either, so, and I called them, and they denied that they even told me where it was. And I didn't hear from anybody but them. So this is the way the whole deal is. We've had nothing but bad problems with Bill Manke and every deal he's ever done. I don't really know why it has to be always this way, but it does seem to be. And thank you very much, and I'm kind of quaky, too. I'm getting old and shaky. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Roodemeyer. Kim, you have three minutes. Please identify yourself at the mic.
My name is Kim Roodemeyer, and I'm here to oppose the request for the zoning map amendment. I have been before this commission several times in opposition of the zoning map amendment due to several significant factors. The first being that this property is mostly in critical flood zone one, and this is also designated flood storage land. That makes development of this property extremely dangerous for east side subdivision, among others. Development of this area puts them at greater risk than they already are. The applicant, even though verbally he will tell you that they are not comparing, has comparing, has repeatedly put in their documents that this is a significant development on the, that there is significant development on the west side of McCarron. It is my contention that comparing the west side of McCarron to the east side in this area is like comparing bananas and elephants. They are not even remotely similar, and the land uses at this time are a study in contrasts. The west side of McCarron was developed with the short-sightedness that Reno is famous for in their attempts to cover every square inch of the flood plain with development. The east side is now the last bastion of protection that southeast Reno has, excuse me, for flood storage and that, for the limited protections that the open space will provide when the next flood comes. To start chipping away at this now would lead to an eventual destruction of not only east side, but other communities surrounding the entire flood storage basin. In the applicant's geotechnical engineering document, it is stated over and over in that the first 12 inches of the deposits on this entire area of flood plain deposits are from the Truckee and the Steamboat Creek from many historic floods. It also states that limitations associated with the use of this soil for urban development as described by the soil survey are a potential for flooding, seasonal high water table, moderately low permeability, and severe frost susceptibility. It also stated in the report that when the exploration took place in April, free water was recorded across the entire side at a stabilized depths as shallow as four feet. This brings serious questions about their flood storage area being rendered useless, as it most likely will have excessive standing water in it year-round, just like the Buckbean flood storage basin. There are also many other factors. Security fencing and extensive landscaping with shrubs and trees in the flood storage area is an insane idea at best and puts surrounding areas, residents at risk. Bringing any amount of fill-in for pads is dangerous to surround, to the surrounding residents and puts them at risk. There should be no fill at all if development is allowed. Buildings should be at current elevation. Bringing in RVs, boats, and cars to store in a designated flood storage area not only puts the surrounding areas, residents at risk for hazardous materials, but also the Truckee River and our drinking water supply, not to mention downstream communities, ecosystems, and sacred sites due to the fact that the RVs, boats, and cars will not have the same scenario of flooding that in the rest of the Truckee Meadow has, an inundation followed by rapid drainage. Historically, water has stored in the storage basin for days. The applicant's evacuation plan for the vehicles would be hilarious if this wasn't so serious. Time constraints do not permit me from going on, but let me end with this. The applicant says that the PUD would allow for future commercial development along McCarron with its associated pads from fill, from fill and impervious parking areas, again putting the nearest residents in danger. It also allows for development of the storage basin sometime in the future, should technology allow the area to no longer be in critical flood zone one. And my comment to that is, really? Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing none? Close that portion of the hearing and bring it back to the board for questions. Questions? Commissioner Wusley.
Question for Bill Gall, City. So my question is about the flow of water, if this, if there was a flood event, and understanding the dynamics in this area of what way the elevations are in the water, of water flow. And obviously, we're trying to get down to the bottom of, we don't want to negatively impact any neighbors and with the flood mitigation and with the directional flow and just kind of how the whole area works hydrologically.
Yeah. For the record, Bill Gall, Senior Civil Engineer. The area is fairly flat. When you're going to get a large flood event, you're going to get flows down, down your streets, and it's going to flow into the flood areas. The large, very large flood events, what we're going to get for the most part is backwater flow coming from Steamboat Creek and ultimately Truckee River. As Truckee rises, those flows that are coming in from Steamboat and the outside, outlying areas will be backwatered in. Those flows are going to come backwater. And on this side, for the most part, as it starts to rise in that area, they have a design that will include openings through the wall to allow flow into that, into their storage areas, into their detention basins. Again, on a large event, you're going to get flows, you know, immediate rains and stuff, some of that's going to fill in those detention basins initially. So some of the larger events will start to fill that detention basin prior to the backwater event coming in as well. But you're not going to get, typically, you're not going to get a large rush of, you know, of heavy stream-type flows in this area. It's going to be more of a backwater event.
So you're saying that you think it would be rare for water to flow towards the outside, towards Pembroke, if, in a heavy rain event?
It would be rare for water to flow from this property towards Pembroke. And even in a heavy rain event, it may come from Pembroke and the streets going towards this property and this area.
So if water did come from Pembroke towards this property, you don't see it backing up? The idea is it should go into the, to retention?
It should go into the retention areas, and that's part of the design. We'll have to show that they have enough openings to accommodate any of the flows that are coming from that area.
Can you think of a better design than these openings? Do you think there's a potential for those to get clogged?
The ones they have and they're showing in, in the PUD itself are very large. I mean, in the sense of they're not, you know, chain-link fence-type openings that are going to easily be clogged. They're larger openings with small bars in them to just prevent, you know, people from entering the things. There could be other areas. There could be flap-type openings and things that are, that are available. They would be up to the design engineer to provide, you know, ideas and designs to us that we can kind of prove that they would have to show would, would work.
That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Is there a chain-link fence around here, around this facility?
As proposed, they have a block wall proposed around the facility and with openings in the wall to allow flow through.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Stapleton.
I have a question also for Bill. I have a couple of questions, but I have a couple of questions for you about the, to follow up on Commissioner Wusley's questions about what really happens with the water during a flood. So this site does flood, this part of the city floods, and it's flooded how many times in the last, you know, 20 years? A couple times, right, to where the water's already up, up over this site and onto McCarron? So I guess what I'm getting at is, is this a regular occurrence, and how, how many times has this happened? Like, how real is this flooding on this site?
Let's, I mean, when you look at the flood map, you know, in a 100-year storm, it's going to come approximately to McCarron. And most of, the rest of the area will be, will be flooded in what's classified as a 100-year storm. To get the perfect 100-year storm throughout the area, it happens irregularly. You might get a localized storm, or you're going to get a larger event that might overtop McCarron locally in some areas. And you might get, in the case of the '97, we got what was classified as a 117-year storm. Does it mean that we're not going to get another 117-year storm next year or this, this winter? No. It simply means that the percent chance of having that large of a storm is, you know, basically one in 100 years. Doesn't mean they can't come back-to-back. We've had some, some large rain events and large floods recently in the last, you know, 20 years. And then prior to that, we've had some areas where we've had drought areas, and we've had very, almost no storms, no five-year storm in a 10- to 15-year period. So it's, it's sort of a risk factor, but it does happen. It is in a flood zone. I mean, clearly, it's in a flood zone. It's there. It's a critical area for Truckee River and the Truckee River Flood Project for storage. To have this area, we know that this is a critical area for flooding during, in large flood events on the Truckee River.
So the short answer is it floods?
I'm sorry.
The short answer is it floods?
It does flood.
Okay, okay. Water covers the site, because it goes up onto McCarron.
It does.
Okay. So my question is, in terms of the mitigation, so how, this works, they're required to do one-to-one mitigation, right, which means that for every, you know, one cubic foot of area that is displaced in the flood plain from development, they have to create retention to match that, so that you're not creating more of an issue for surrounding property owners and increasing the water that then could go onto their properties? Did I say that right? Is that how that works?
You did. That's correct. That's our code standard for areas in the critical, in critical flood zone one, is they have a minimum of one-to-one mitigation.
Okay.
Within the same zone. If you break down the critical flood zone one, they have smaller, you know, flood areas, smaller areas. You have to stay within that same flood area. They're proposing to do all of it on-site. And additionally, in the PUD, they've, they've added that they will have a positive effect, which means they will take out at least one-to-one, you know. They would have to take out slightly more than that to make sure there's a positive effect.
Right. So that's my question. So what is the mitigation on this side? I know the minimum is one-to-one, and I remember when that ratio was passed, it was controversial, because people said, okay, that's the minimum to guarantee. There's no margin for error with the one-to-one. You know, for every, you know, amount that's displaced, you're going to have more flooding, you know, unless you really mitigate and dig a trench or whatever of exactly that much. So for this, I'm asking because I'm wondering, did they do that minimum, or are they offering to do a little bit more just so there's a little bit higher margin of error for these surrounding property owners? Or what's the plan for this project, and can you show me where on the site that mitigation is being done?
Okay.
Or maybe that's a question for the applicant.
I'll, I'll let the applicant address it first.
And if I, please, if I didn't explain that correctly, you can correct me. I just, I'm not sure.
Sure. No, I understand, I understand. Obviously, we have the detention basin around the entire south and east side. That's, it's on average about three and a half feet deep. Additionally, by utilizing the alternative paving standards within the project itself, that we're not creating all that impervious surface, so that will allow for more infiltration. We've got standards in our handbook to, that require that. We need to work with Bill on the final design. So because, because we haven't chosen a specific product, it could be asphalt grinnings, it could be permacrete, it could be something like, we need, but it, obviously, it will put us above the one-to-one ratio. All of our hydraulic calculations that were included with the PUD looked at absolute worst-case scenarios if that was all paved, and that won't be the case.
Okay, but my question was just real simple. Are you doing the one-to-one mitigation? Where, where are you doing that on the site? Show me where that is, that, you know, what's the volume that will be displaced?
All of this. All of this area is, accounts for our one-to-one mitigation.
Okay. So are you guys doing the minimum one-to-one mitigation, or are you doing a little more? And just, you know, I thought about this when we, when we met. You talked about the, doing permeable pavers. But in a flood event, you know, the water's coming up, and there's nothing to permeate to, because the water's table's already up at the top there. So I don't know if that is actually going to add to your mitigation, if it's really, if the site's really covered with water. I don't think you can count that towards your mitigation. But tell me exactly what your mitigation ratio is on the site with the retention you have, and if you guys can do any additional mitigation.
With the retention we have, we're, we're just slightly above one-to-one. With, and I can't answer that today, because we're still working to determine which particular product we're going to use on that. But I think Bill would concur with me that if anything, that's going to have a positive effect on the overall mitigation ratio. And if, while I'm up here, if I can just...
Is there, I guess what I'm getting at, is there, is there an opportunity for additional mitigation with the, just because that's such a close, you know, margin of error to have that one-to-one, you know, if you guys are really close to that one-to-one, is there any opportunity, can you, can you make the pond a little deeper? Can you do anything to increase mitigation?
We can't necessarily make the pond deeper because the, because of the water table. I mean, I mean, we're happy to make it deeper where we can, but there becomes a certain limit where, you know, you need it, need it to function. We do have a standard that if, if the flood control project is adopted and some of this is taken out of, out of the critical zone, and we're able to expand in the future somehow, that we would have to do a one-to, one and a half-to-one ratio. And like I said, that we have a standard in there showing that, that we have to demonstrate with our final design that we are creating a positive impact to these joint properties. Not that we're just maintaining status quo. We have to show a positive impact. So we feel that that has, has taken us above and beyond. We're clearly, we've committed ourselves to going above and beyond what code would require.
Okay. But in this design, it doesn't necessarily show that. It shows just about a one-to-one, right? Especially if you can't increase the size of that detention pool?
Right. But, but that would all come with final design based on the standards that are in our handbook.
But if there's no opportunity to dig it deeper, where's that going to come from?
It can come from, like I said, we'd need to determine what the paving, what that does. So what, what this does right now, I mean, we, clearly, we meet code, and we've got a standard that says we will exceed code in our handbook. And those, to spend the money to do all those calculations now, we come with, you do that with the final design. That's, that's kind of a standard way to approach the project.
Okay. Bill, do you concur with all that? That...
I'm sorry to grill you guys. I just, this is, I know this is the, this is the, really the crux for the people in that neighborhood, you know, is this mitigation ratio.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I, looking at the, this is, it's just a rough estimate that the engineer did on his, by doing a quick AutoCAD on this. And for example, in this, in this area, what they're proposing is, they're saying in existing condition, they have 74,000 cubic feet of storage. And then with the new design, they'll have rough, you know, a little over 75,000 cubic feet of storage. So they're providing an additional 1,000 cubic feet of storage beyond the one-to-one that was required. Regarding pervious pavers and those types of things, will it provide us a very minor benefit? It will. It'll allow infiltration, will allow your, you know, your soils underneath the pavement to provide a little bit of additional capture. It's not something that we would give them credit for, because it's not, clearly, we're not, we can't classify that volume and calculate that volume. So we couldn't, we wouldn't give any subsurface, you know, volume as credit for them as part of their mitigation. They would have to provide an open volume as they are with the detention basin for this minute. And as he wrote in the PUD, it's, they would provide a positive, you know, benefit. So something over one-to-one would meet the PUD in a final design.
So the answer to my question is, they're displacing 74,000 cubic meters, did you say? And the retention pool is 75, so there is a little bit of play there?
What, what the, the study shows is there's slightly, 74,283 cubic yards is available storage as the site is, sits right now for the flood zone.
Oh, I see.
With their design, they'll have 75,615 cubic. So they will, they will increase by 1,300 cubic yards with this, with this design.
Okay. So that takes into account the displacement that occurs from building structures on the site.
Right.
And then balanced against the, the depth of those retention pools.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. I did have a question about the fencing, but I can wait if anybody has any other questions about anything.
Any other questions? Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for the applicant. I see that there's, there's some comments in here from the Neighborhood Advisory Board, and that you had met with several times in the, in the neighborhood. And I'm referring back to the, the comment of the neighbors that they had not had any conversations or been notified of this. I just would like to clarify that.
Absolutely. I appreciate you bringing that up. In fact, Mrs. Woodkey, who made the statement that she had never talked to us, we had two separate telephone conversations within the last two weeks with Mrs. Woodkey, my partner, Derek Wilson. We offered to come to her home and present our project to her. She refused. We extended the offer to come to our office to present the project. She, she denied, she chose not to. We spoke with Terry Thomas, who claimed that she was their representative. I provided Mrs. Thomas with copies of all of our documents, and I followed up with a phone call, and she said there was no reason to meet.
How many Neighborhood Advisory Board meetings did you present this at?
Including...
And what type of notification is given to people in the surrounding areas?
We, as, as part of the master plan amendment request, we noticed, we personally noticed everybody within 750 feet on this project, because it's in cooperative planning. All of this was also forwarded to Washoe County for review. However, the, Washoe County has suspended their Citizens Advisory Board meetings. At this time, I presume for budget reasons. However, I did have their mailing list from when we did the master plan amendments. We invited the CAB, and I, we, all of those CAB members were sent emails asking if they would like any additional information to please contact us, and we never received any response.
So to sum that up, everybody's had the opportunity over the length of time that you've been working on this project with the owner to give their, give their reasonings for or against, and how they, they may want to alter it, not just once, but multiple times.
Right. And actually, six months ago, after our city council hearing on the master plan amendment, I personally spoke with Mr. Woodkey in the, in the lobby and gave him my business card and said he was welcome to call me at any time.
And that goes for the other neighbors that are right in that area?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question for the applicant's representative. In terms of the flooding concern about the fence, I looked at the design of the fence in the handbook on page nine, I believe. And it's a concrete fence, I'm sorry, page 11. It's a concrete fence with a small grate to where the water can flow through. To me, so, so this is basically going to create, you know, a dam beyond which the water will...
Keep in mind that, that is...
So my question is, this design, is there a way that you can do fencing that's totally permeable so that the water can flow onto that site? Because that, to me, doesn't look like it's going to cut it, especially with these small grates against which, you know, in floods, you know, that water's not just pure water. It's got debris and brush and stuff like that up against that.
It's got debris and brush and stuff like that up against that grate. So how's that going to work? And is there another option there?
And I will be the first to admit that that's not a very good exhibit. It's, it's, it's misleading. That grate that's shown on that is actually almost four feet wide and two feet tall. It's a big grate. It doesn't necessarily do its justice. And what it doesn't also show is that there'll be multiple grates. It's just a standard detail of, of how the wall will look. And I spoke with our engineer earlier today, and he told me that, you know, even the heights of those will, you know, where they're at in the wall will vary all with the final hydrology study. And the size of them can vary, you know, obviously, they can be increased. The wall is, is really necessary for security reasons. You know, you obviously don't want people coming through it. It needs to let the water through with people out. There, it's easy to maintain from our perspective. It, the other kind of, like I said, the interesting thing is, is really having the size of them and where they go. So we really think that it will function well. I'll be the first to agree with you that that, that exhibit is not, not the best exhibit. But I think it truly will work if, if there's multiple grates put into the wall.
So how many, how often will there be a grate like that, is my first question. And number two, why not just do an iron, you know, fence where it's totally permeable to the water?
We had actually originally included, I'm going to put this up, that fence on the bottom as a potential. And we were, based on, on meeting with staff and the standards in code that require screening of structures from adjoining residential properties, the residential adjacency standards essentially, that fence would not be permitted. And so therefore, we did not want to use our PUD to circumvent any, we wanted to be above and beyond all code requirements, not circumvent any code requirements. So we took that, we agreed to remove that detail.
Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you. I have a question for Bill Gall, please. Bill, I'd like to go back to your explanation of where you, where, an engineer, not you specifically, but where engineering says that this water will back up and come in from. And you pointed out that it, the water will come in a direction of east to, to west. Is that correct?
Like I said, the, in a, in a very large flood event, ultimately, the water will, it'll come, mainly it comes from the upper areas, it comes down into Steamboat Creek. And the other drainages in the area come down. It gets to a point where the Truckee River is so high, it's backed up from the Truckee River. It stops. It flows, and it will overtop Steamboat, which is east of this, and come back, come into, and come back into the whole entire area there and flood that well, that way as well. In a very large event, they're going to get drainages from basically every area and from every direction on this.
Okay, so any of the, any of the, I guess I want to call them flood canals, drainage canals, even the ones around the airport could be, could be providing water. What my point is, is, do you expect that this property would be generating the waters causing these floods? Or is it also in the path, the same as any of these residences, in the path of the flood? I mean, if you can only take this down, as we've heard that the water table tonight is somewhere at plus or minus four feet below existing grade, if you had 500 acres out there and dropped it down 500 feet, you still wouldn't be stopping the flow of water depending where it's coming from, correct?
That is correct.
And is, do you see anything that's going to cause this property with the design that's provided and the use that's being discussed now to, to be the generator of the flood?
No, it's not the generator of the flood.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Woosley?
Question for staff, Nathan? I'm curious, turning this over to the Truckee River Flood Program and J.L. Dean, exactly what they're looking for. Are they looking for just a one-to-one mitigation? Are they looking on negative effects for the surrounding area? Can you explain, or do you know what the process they go through to whether they approve or, or not approve a project that you give them?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. We, we had a brief conversation. Bill Gall might, might be able to answer that in more specificity. Paul Urban did review this. We worked with Carrie Lonza in the Public Works Department Environmental Services, who, who had reviewed this. And what we were told was simply it's consistent with, with their modeling, consistent with their policies. I defer to Bill if maybe he knows anything more specific than that.
Yeah, specifically with the flood project, and for Bill Gall for the record, in review and approval, they, they don't have review or approval authority over these types of developments on itself. They coordinate with the city and, and Sparks and the county, and ensure that the projects and developments that are within the flood zones and the areas that are critical to the flood project and flood protection within, within the area are properly mitigated. They've run numerous models, and they've run numerous developments within the critical flood zone, and taken different mitigation volumes out. And they have come up with, over time, in the coordination of the entities, they come up with the one-to-one mitigation within their small, you know, areas as effective in all cases as they've checked their models. So that's, that's where they presented to the entities the one-to-one mitigation minimum within the same, same area. If it's outside that area, they need to provide the mitigation as well as, you know, put that development within their model and see if that model has any negative impacts. The city of Reno, you know, took their advice and included that in our code approximately two years ago. So we, by coming in and meeting our code standards, they will comply with the ideas and the policies of flood control.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman, any questions? Commissioner Luck?
I just have one, Bill. Just one. I heard a number you said that that property right now retains 74,000 cubic meters of whatever. Yards, cubic yards?
Yes, 74,283 cubic yards.
As it sits right now.
As it sits right now, that's, that's the volume of water that would sit down there on, in that flood, flood event, which was the, the 1997 flood event, which is the model.
And the same property in this configuration will hold more water?
Yes, it will hold roughly 1,300 cubic, cubic yards more water.
So, so you're, you're saying that building this is better than leaving it raw as, in regards to flood control?
I'm saying that there is more volume to hold flood, flood volume in the large flood events with this property as designed.
By 1,300 cubic yards?
By 1,300 cubic yards.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you very much. Any comments on this? Comments, comments? Let's start on the far end and work our way down. Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a, a good quality design. It will hold more water. I don't think that in any way, shape, or form, this is going to add to flood damage for neighboring properties. By the time water starts running, it's not going to be, start from this property. It's starting from an outside source. And, and, you know, there, as, as much of a flood plain as it is, it, it's been shown with no development on it that it floods, and it floods through these houses. We haven't heard it again this evening. There's water going through front doors and back doors on, on adjacent properties. As calculations have just been discussed, this property with, rather than leaving it raw, will hold an additional 2%. We, we believe, running some numbers in our head or on a calculator right now. But nonetheless, it's not, not taking away. It's, it's going to withhold some water. So I'll be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieski. Commissioner Stapleton?
I do have some concerns with this project. And I did do the math and find out, you know, that is 2%. I, I wish it could be more, but it looks like due to the limitations of the site, that that's, you know, but it still is a little increase. So I appreciate that design and the amount of work that you guys have put into it. However, I, I really think that there's some additional concerns here. I, I, I think that that fencing, together with that landscaping, I mean, we all know how flood, floods work, and debris gets caught. And I just don't buy that that is totally, with all that fencing, even with those grates, which to me are still, you know, decreased by at least half the percentage of water that would otherwise be allowed to flow on that site, that that really is going to create the same free flow of water back and forth across that site. And in my mind, it'll still, you know, let water dam up. And here's the issue is, what's, you know, what's the impact to neighbors? Of course, water isn't coming from that site. But could this development, you know, displace, you know, or not give a place for water to flow that could then increase the amount of water, you know, to the surrounding properties? And I just, when I met with the applicants, I, I really sort of grilled them on this in terms of that landscaping around the perimeter and the fence. And I, I just, to me, that fence doesn't cut it. In addition to, and this isn't something we got into, but it was in the, the handbook, I don't know if, I, I looked at it, and I asked the applicant's representative specifically about the evacuation plan. So there's going to be 200 RVs on this site, and, you know, a flood comes, you've got a couple days. Every one of them has to be running. Every one of them has to be, to be moved. And, you know, how, how realistic is that? You know, they presented it, yeah, that's realistic. But that's another variable that, in my mind, you know, so then it floods. We know it floods. We know there's, you know, a couple feet of water on this site. So we're not talking about, it just gets wet. It floods. And so if there's RVs left on this site, they're tipped over, there's oil and gas. It's adding to the issue out here. And I just, you know, who's, who's, you know, I also asked them about enforcement, you know, I, you know, so who's going to enforce that? They're going to make a promise that all those RVs will be moved, but, you know. So to me, that's a lot of variables that could negatively impact surrounding properties despite the effort that they've made. And I appreciate the work that they've put in. In my mind, I just don't know if it's feasible, you know, to do this on this site. And then in addition, my final concern, and, and the reason why I don't think I can support this, you know, unless I hear something else that, that can sway me, is that I just don't think that, that the use is, is, you know, is compatible with the adjacent, you know, land uses. I mean, I know across the street, you've got commercial, but you've got low-density residential to the south, and then you've got open space, space to the east and the north, you know. And this is a corner of a huge open space and flood plain. And, you know, in my mind, it doesn't fit. And that's a factor too. So that's where I stand on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Stapleton. Commissioner Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that this is a, a challenging piece of property. I think the applicant, and working with the staff and the neighbors over quite a length of time, have, have made some significant, made, turned this into, it's quite a nice project. And that it actually has, it's a benefactor by the mitigation that's going to, the additional water feet that it's going to allow. And I, I think that I will support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Woosley?
I agree that this is a challenging piece of property. And then, like Commissioner Stapleton, I was trying to figure out with this property and its use, you know, is this appropriate with, you know, a good portion of it being in the flood? And, you know, compared to having, say, livestock, or some other daycare, or something else that there's a risk of flood, you know, having vehicles up to their doors and water may not be the worst thing as far as use of this property. I'm not sure how much water it would take to flip, something like that. But obviously, if there was a flip, that would be a concern. Not sure if it would get to that point. Trying to think, what, what could you use this property for? I mean, obviously, the owner has, has the right to, to put a proposal in front of us. And this may be one that I think actually fits. Yes, I think the drainage is a concern going inside. Hopefully, the, the owner slash caretaker of this property would, would keep those grates clean before any kind of flood event. I hope that's something that would be taken care of. And just kind of going through, we definitely have asked our questions with the engineer, going through the, the Truckee River Flood Project, and their advice. And I think I'm able to support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Woosley. Commissioner Kaufman?
I feel this applicant should be able to develop this project also. I've been involved with flood plain projects before, only a company I worked for. Forty-eight hour notice to get, and it, it was a concrete company that had 78 trucks, I think, facilities, that type of thing. And, and that's what it was. It was, you move in that timeframe, and you have a contingency plan to get that project or all those equipment out of the flood area. I think when you talk about this fencing, and where it's, if it's two-foot-by-four-foot grates, that's pretty much kind of the standard, really. So I can support this project. I think it's actually a good project that's come before us. I think, again, with the mitigation of what they have, it's not going to add to the flooding. If it, if it wasn't there, I don't, I don't think it'd be, the flooding would be any better or any worse. So I can support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Luck?
Well, for me, I'm new to this, but, you know, all of this talk, we were talking about everything in terms of the flood plain. But from what I can see, just as kind of a person who lives here, you're just not going to get a better project than this aesthetically speaking. And that's a big deal. The fact that there's four times as much landscaping, that's what other cities do when, when they develop things like, I know in Houston, that's an issue. They, what they do is, they use landscaping to solve some of these problems. And it seems like that all the fill and, and things like that, it's, it's going to cause more of a problem. But honestly, I have to say, I think this land is going to be developed. And I don't think you can get a better project than this. I think that the applicant's representatives have been over backwards and dotted the i's and crossed the t's. And I just can't see it getting much better. So I would have to support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Luck. And for the first time in seven and a half years, I'm going to actually support a project in that area. It's been a long time coming, but it's nice to see something there that isn't raised above the existing level, that actually makes it better for the properties around it. The question is, with nothing there, is a flood better or worse? Well, with this here, it actually protects some of the residents to the side. We're assuming every flood's going to be six feet deep and lasts for three days. A lot of floods, Harren's Landing and places where I have friends, the flood came up to their doorstep, didn't go into the house. That 1,300 cubic yards would make the difference of not flooding a house or flooding a house. It's not going to stop a flood, but it's not going to create one. It's actually going to make the neighborhood better. You've gone above and beyond. I don't think I've seen a project in that area where there's been as many meetings, as much discussion, and a willingness by the developer to add landscaping and trees and, and a surface that doesn't just force water to run off. That's what we've been fighting for years and years and years here. So when the proper time comes and the motion is made, I will be voting in favor of this project. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to motion, I'd like to continue discussion.
Commissioner Wieski?
Commissioner Stapleton brought up a, a concern that I think is a quality concern, and that is on the grates. And the grates will be sized by an engineer. And you're never going to be able to prepare the grates to accept whatever debris is floating in the water. That's, that's a given. And I agree with that. And I, I agree with your concern about the size of the grading. And, and sitting here, listening to the other commissioners share their comments regarding this- this project, I've thought about something that, I don't know that we can actually condition it, but maybe we make the recommendation to, right now, I make a recommendation to the applicant's representative and with staff listening to it, that quite possibly on the east property line and potentially the north property line, definitely not the south property line where we have residential adjacency, that maybe some, a couple of openings with the steel fencing that was shown that's not allowed for residential adjacency be put in to the block wall system. It's more than what a two-foot-by-four-foot grate is. It will allow damming, and should damming occur, water to go over it and through it versus having to climb over the top of a block wall or a concrete wall. And those openings could be small enough and spaced appropriately that I think that would allow the water to go through it. Again, it's something that I don't think we can condition. I don't want to help somebody design their project. That's not our job. But it's a suggestion to the applicant's representative and to staff to look for, should that be brought forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question, which would go along with what Commissioner Wieski, and it has to do with Bill? When that property flooded, how high was the water on that property? You know, at the last 20 years or whatever? What was the highest point?
Well, let's, on the east end, back where that east end wall is, it probably was in the range of four to five feet at the 97, maybe slightly higher than that. But, you know, Art Topo has that down at around, you know, 4,390 on the east end and 4,395, 4,396 up near McCarran. So it got to McCarran slightly overtopped, so probably in, like I said, four to six feet range on the east end on the larger events. So we were, if I may, we were discussing as well here with the discussion of the walls, there are potentials, if we're uncomfortable with some of the openings and some of the designs to potentially offset portions of the concrete wall or the block wall so that we would have, I just quickly drew it up, you know, just offset portions of those walls so we would have like five-foot openings or so, where we could put in just, you know, security fencing, allow free flow basically through those areas to provide greater flow through.
But you couldn't put that on the residential side, right?
Well, I would have to work with Nathan and the developer on what we can do to meet code. I would think that that would be a solid fence. You wouldn't see through it. We'd have to work on that.
Commissioner Kaufman, and if I can interrupt you, please. The reason that I wouldn't suggest that on the south wall, which is a residential wall, is you may slow some of that water down from going into the backyards of those residences if it's a solid wall or a semi-solid wall. But you open it up on the east end where the water may be coming from, or the north side coming off of the Truckee, like that, that allows water pressure to go somewhere without taking out a section of wall. I think that's a very reasonable sketch.
Thank you.
And if the applicant were to agree to work with staff to create something like that, so we would have a less than a two-by-four or more than just a simple two-by-four, maybe every 10 feet or 20 feet, whatever the engineer here says would work to keep that water flowing and mitigate any kind of damming, would that satisfy the commissioners for, and if you agree to that on the record?
And for the record, yeah, we'll do that, and we will work with Bill and Nathan here and get an updated standard into the handbook before this goes to city council.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Still ready for a motion? Motion, motion. Commissioner Woosley?
In the case number LDC 13-00025, PUD McCarran Crossing, based on the compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance subject to condition A as written below. And I can make the findings.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harris, I can second that motion and make the findings as well.
We have a second by Commissioner Harris. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Can we have discussion on the motion before we vote, please? Okay. I just want to say that I appreciate the efforts of the other commissioners to address the problem with the fencing and the permeability. I do appreciate that. I think that that will be an improvement if this project goes forward. For me, it's, you know, because of the other concerns I stated earlier, it still doesn't get me there, being able to vote yes on this project. The site very well may be developable. I'm not trying to say it's not, but this, to me, doesn't get me there. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let the record show, the vote is six to one in favor of the motion. Thank you for your effort and good luck on your project. I'm going to read the appeal just for, note, now, wait a minute. Any action taken by the planning commission on a tentative map, special use permit variance or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person or entity must make his or her its own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the planning commission recommendation. With that little bit of business being done, we will move on to item seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a meeting coming up, I believe it's next Wednesday. So I will have a status update in December.
Thank you very much. And if you've never been to one, it's a thrilling event. Item eight, staff announcements. Report on status of planning division projects and anything else you can cover there, Vern.
Vern Close, I'll just put this all together. Just one announcement on what council has approved. They approved the Wells Avenue Conservation District yesterday. And then also for training opportunities, this Hanson indicated that there's still been comment on training, and there are a few opportunities available through the Utah APA. I have the website. There's one tomorrow, there's one next Friday, and then there's also one next Thursday, and then there's one on the 30th. The one tomorrow is on reaching the ones who don't show up. It basically deals with web tools to get people that don't come to meetings, other ways to get outreach for input into public projects. On the 15th, it's ethical challenges for private consultants. It's an ethics discussion. On the 16th, it's ethics skits, where I'm assuming that would be scenarios on certain ethical issues related to planning. And then on the 30th, it's, there's a demystifying LED, which would probably be kind of relevant to what we were talking about today. So if you'd like that website, I can read it out or give it to you after the meeting, or you can contact us tomorrow, we can get you the website. And that website has essentially a program every Friday throughout the year, so you can go to the website, see what's coming up, pick the ones you want to look at, and they last for an hour and a half, and they begin at 10 o'clock in the morning, go to 11:30.
Vern, would it be possible to have Michelle email that out to us in the morning?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thanks.
We will do that.
Thank you, Vern. Is that it?
And that's all I have.
Perfect. Item nine, commissioner's suggestion for future agenda items. Any suggestions? No? Item 10, public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment and not for comment on individual action items contained on this agenda. Hearing and seeing no public comment, I will close that portion. Before I get to item 11, adjournment, this weekend is Veterans Day. There'll be celebrations all over town. Remember a vet when you see one, thank him. With that, we are adjourned.